We'll call it order tonight's Committee of the Whole for the June 17 Auburn City Council Meeting. The City Council has the minutes from the June 3 Committee of the Whole. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a move to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are approved. Any questions on tonight's agenda for Acting City Manager Cummings? Mr. Cummings, anything for us?
We do have an item of other business. I'll announce that at the beginning of the regular meeting, but that'll be to, you know, to announce and acknowledge an appeal to an grievance filed for a CDBG home loan.
Anything else for Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, and I'd also like to point out too that, and I was going to announce that in the agenda, I know I did provide you an updated resolution for the item related to United Rentals concerning the, that identifies the planning commission's condition of approval.
Okay, you've heard the questions. All right, so we're moved to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we'll turn to Committee of the Whole, and for our audience, we'll get started right at 6 o'clock. Please talk and enjoy yourselves in the next few minutes. We'll call it order tonight's Auburn City Council Meeting for June 17, 2025. Welcome all of you who have joined us here in the council chambers. We also welcome those that are listening on WANI as well as watching through our streaming services. With the roll call, Lindsey?
Adams.
Here.
O'Blin.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Foreman.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Whitton.
Here.
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Earlier tonight during the Committee of the Whole, we did not have any official actions for the council to take place. Mr. Cummings, who has taken Ms. Crouch's place tonight, does have a few announcements that he'll be making as we get started. Under regular announcements, I want to recognize and thank the Auburn Community Theater. This weekend, they'll be celebrating their 20th year of serving our community, and I'm certainly proud and thankful for everything that they've done to serve our children as well as all of our citizens, to provide great entertainment and great, you know, just a great organization to be a part of. And so congratulations to the Auburn Community Theater. I want to remind everyone that our next meeting is not until July 8. We are skipping the first week in July because that is the week of the 4th of July, and certainly hope everybody has safe travels and enjoys your time that week. I do want to remind everybody that our fireworks will be taking place on July 4 at Duck Sanford Stadium, weather permitting, and I appreciate all the hard work and collaboration that goes on amongst a number of city facilities and certainly, excuse me, city departments to make that happen, and we appreciate all of their hard work. And then finally, I just want to read an email that myself and the city manager received on Monday, June 9, and it came from the city administrator from the city of Conway, South Carolina. And if you would bear with me, I'd like to read this to you. This gentleman's name is Adam Emrick. The city of Conway was named the second nicest city in America in a survey that came out recently. We came in second to Hilo, Hawaii. I think we should have been third. Auburn should have been ahead of us. As you probably know, Coastal Carolina visited the Auburn Tigers recently to face off in the NCAA baseball tournament. As coastal baseball fans, my wife and I traveled to watch the games and cheer on our team. Venturing into a foreign environment for such an important series is a little intimidating for visiting fans. However, nothing could have been more incorrect than this misconception. I have never been to such a friendly city as Auburn. From the minute we arrived, we were greeted with nothing but the most sincere kindness that I think I could have, could be achieved. The hotel staff was top-notch, the servers at all of our restaurants were amazing, even the counter folks at Tumors Drugs were aware that we were coastal fans and knew we were there for the game, and they welcomed us like we were friends, our neighbors. Even after game one ended at 2:00 a.m., college students that walked back with us to downtown were complimentary and cordial and fine ambassadors of your city. I personally do the customer service training for my staff in Conway. Before this weekend, I would have said we were the friendliest bunch you could find. I now have a new height to try to reach. Well done, and thank you. I'm not reading that because I take any credit for that. I'm reading that because that is the culture of the city that we all live in, that we all work in, and then hopefully we all serve. And I hope that's an encouragement to all of you. As we keep seeing new visitors, you know, Camp where Eagle is going on right now, there's a group of 400 or 500 parents and future students wandering around this city really through the end of July. You never know when their visitors come into our town, and we've all got a great opportunity to welcome them to our community. And certainly, I'm very proud of that email from that gentleman who did not have to take the time to do that. Interestingly enough, I hope he's having a good trip to Omaha, and his team is continuing to play well at the College World Series, and we wish them the very best. Anyone else have an announcement or something they'd like to say? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Connie?
Yes, I just want to, I just want to say thank you to, we are, I was hoping that Sergeant Knowlton, I was hoping he would be here tonight, but since he's not, and if he's not listening, I would like for you to tell him that Councilwoman Connie Taylor said, "Thank you, thank you, thank you." They led the parade, and they was once again friendly, very, very friendly, and entertained with the crowd, and everybody was pleased with the service at their, public safety. They were there on time, and I just, you know, I just want to give them the kudos and just say, um, thank you. After, this was the parade this week, but come Sunday, it'll be our event out at Kisa Park from 2:00 to 6:00 o'clock. And I'll give you your credit after, after we have it. But I, I just want to, I just, I, I was just really pleased, and he was just so friendly. And he was, you know, entertaining with the kids and stuff, and everybody just really enjoyed him, and he even did, tried to do the dance, the boots-on-the-ground dance. So he just had a really good time, and so, you know, the other officers and stuff that was out, and the guys that put out the barricades and stuff, everybody was just really friendly, and I really, really appreciate it. And I just want to thank Bob and his crew also for, they was in the parade, and I think everybody had a good time, and I just happened to look, look up as we was approaching, getting ready to get on board, and then guess who I seen? I seen our mayor. So thank you for coming out.
You're welcome.
And enjoying the festivities, and I hope to see you again Sunday.
You will. I've been told to be there, Connie.
Yeah. All right, this, this.
Good, all right. Anyone else? Mayor? Yes, sir, please.
Yeah, I'd just like to say once again, you know, Juneteenth is coming right up and is right on the heels of the Army Birthday, and I hope all of y'all enjoyed the nice parade we had, that was super. But I think we'd be remiss if we didn't recognize the 365,000 Union soldiers and some sailors who perished so that it's be possible to even have a June 16, so a Juneteenth, excuse me. So I know they all would have proudly stood for the National Anthem and enjoyed the festivities. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move ahead. Mr. Cummings? Well, excuse me, Auburn University Communications.
I was getting ready to go, and I was like, oh, I apologize. Good evening to all of you. Hope you all are having a good week and just enjoying kind of the on and off good weather we've been having. My name is Vera Smithy, and I'm serving as the Executive Vice President of Outreach this year on SGA, and I'm here to give a report on behalf of Auburn University SGA. And the Auburn University Board of Trustees had their summer meeting this past June 6, and the board approved a number of large-scale projects that will improve the student experience, such as the addition of a wire road sidewalk from Lynn Morrison Drive to West Sanford Avenue, as well as the demolition of Spital Hall in favor of a new Call to Human Sciences academic and research facility. And then Auburn Baseball, of course, ended the season with the first-time hosting of the Super Regional Tournament and coming out with a 41-20 overall record, as well as a vastly improved SEC record. And the Tigers have high hopes for upcoming years. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Vera. I had mentioned at our last meeting, I had an opportunity to address the Board of Trustees, and certainly honored to do that, and think that they're sincerely interested in what goes on in the city that the university that they lead is located in, so appreciate their, their support of our community. All right, now, as Citizens Communications on items on tonight's agenda, if you'd like to speak to the City Council about any of our items on the agenda, in particular, I would say the items that are on the consent agenda, if you look at ordinances and resolutions, those both have public hearings attached, and it'd be more appropriate for you to speak to those items during those public hearings. So if you'd like to address the City Council about anything on the consent agenda, this would be your time to come forward, and you have five minutes, and we'd ask you to come to the dais and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll move ahead. All right, now, Mr. Cummings.
Thank you, Mayor. First up is announcements on board vacancies. Appointments will be made at the July 22, 2025 City Council Meeting. First is Greenspace Advisory Board. There are two positions. The terms will begin August 8, 2025, and end August 7, 2029. Second is a planning commission vacancy. One position, it's an unexpired term, that it will begin immediately upon appointment and end July 31, 2028. This opening is a result of a recent resignation of a commissioner. Under other business tonight, we do have an item. Mayor Anders will acknowledge a grievance appeal concerning a community development block grant program home rehabilitation loan. We'll address that at that time.
Okay, thank you. All right, the consent agenda.
All right, for the consent agenda, does anyone like to remove any item from the consent agenda for a separate consideration?
Yes, please. Items 8B4 and 8B5.
Anyone else?
Item 8B2 and 3, please.
All righty, there's one left for you, Sonny, you want it?
No, sure.
Okay.
They got mine.
Okay, so we're not going to talk about the belt press.
All right, 8B2.
8B2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute game day contracts with the Auburn Game Day Law Enforcement Corporation and area public safety agencies for the purpose of providing supplemental law enforcement services at Auburn University sporting events between August 2, 2025 through July 31, 2026.
Move for approval. All right, we have a motion of second, Mr. Griswold.
Thank you. Yeah, I just had a question. I'm not real familiar with what this corporation is, this Auburn Game Day Law Enforcement Corporation, and who, who makes up the corporation, and who are the officers, and who signs on behalf of this consolidated group of law enforcement officials? What's the other party?
Yeah, ask the Public Safety Executive Director, Will Matthews, to address that.
Sure, so the law enforcement Game Day Corporation was established, I believe, in 2016 to better handle the insurance requirements and the contractual agreements that we have with outside agencies to come assist us during football games and other athletic events. The city manager sits as the president of the Game Day Corporation and is the authorized designee for, for those contracts.
So, all right. So it's a contract between the city and basically the city manager to represent this consolidated group of law enforcement officials?
Is the corporation created by the city to better handle the insurance and workman's comp claims and anything that deals with those contracted agencies that come help us for these events? All of the, all of their pay is funneled through this corporation, the university reimburses us for those expenses.
Okay, yeah, it's been a great endeavor for the longest I can remember, and I just wasn't clear on who actually, you know, who the corporation itself was, so thank you very much for that explanation.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions regarding this? Yes, Mr. Sonny.
Can you also explain the relationship between AU Security and City of Auburn Security for events like this and other things?
Certainly, so the Auburn University employs Department of Campus Safety and Security. They handle non-sworn security activities such as walking the campus at night, checking doors, locking facilities, monitoring the cameras that are on campus, operating the security shuttles that you see driving around. They do emergency management activities, they do training for the university employees. So basically, all of the things that don't require a sworn law enforcement officer. The city of Auburn is contractually obligated for all law enforcement activities at Auburn University.
Okay, thank you. Well, how many other additional agencies support the city of Auburn to support this corporation on a, on a football game day in particular?
Depending on the size of the game, we have anywhere between 12 and 15 outside agencies supporting us at all levels. It's, it's local, county, state, and federal.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion of second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Next item is 8B3. It's a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Floyd Services, Service Company Incorporated in the amount of $121,900 to complete the Musco Sports Lighting System installation at the Yarbor Tennis Center indoor courts. The City Council authorized the purchase of the Musco Lighting System for use on this project at its May 6, 2025 meeting.
Move for approval. Second. Motion second, Mr. Griswold, again.
Yeah, thank you again. I just noticed we had three bidders on this, and one of which did not respond to addendum 1, so obviously, not having that dentum, they were the lower bid. Is there a reason that they chose not to participate or not to make a proposal for the entire project?
We don't know that, but that would automatically disqualify them from consideration if they did not, if they did not submit a responsive bid.
Okay, so we just, we just don't know that, okay. All right, and let's see, the other ones, where are they, where are they out of? Floyd is, who do you wrote?
They're here, they're local.
They're local, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments? We have a motion of second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 8B4 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a service agreement in the amount of $147,267.60 with Flash Park Incorporated for parking access and revenue control system, hardware and software for the Wright Street parking deck, in addition to a $600 monthly licensing fee associated with the software. This includes installation of new access control gates and payment kiosks at the Wright Street parking deck.
I'd like to move to postpone this item to a date certain of July 8.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to postpone this item to our July 8 City Council Meeting. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, and we'll hear this again on July 8. All right, item 5.
Item 8B5 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a service agreement in the amount of $8,000 per month and an unguaranteed annual incentive fee with Last Parking Georgia LLC for management services associated with the Wright Street parking deck.
I'd like to move to postpone this item to a date certain of July 8.
Second. All right, we have a motion of second to postpone until July 8. Any comments, questions?
Now, I know you asked him to postpone it, but what would postpone?
So we can have further discussions on the reasons and the alternatives and other aspects of it, which is a lot of information and a lot of, of an investment that I feel like we need some more time to understand.
Connie, we'll be asking the City Council to come together in the near future and have a work session to understand about the parking deck. I mean, I, my summary would be is that this parking deck is starting to mature, it's starting to get really active, and we're starting to learn the best way for it to work, and we're also probably seeing some things that, that are not as productive that we need to correct. And, and so with this coming forward, I believe, it's my sense that the rest of y'all, like me, are just need some more information about the parking deck as we move forward, and so we'll get together and have a meeting about that and learn from staff what it's really like to operate a 350-car parking deck.
Oh, okay, so it's going, that, that's going to take place before the 8th of July?
That would be the intent, yes, ma'am. Yep. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion of second to move till July 8. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, and we'll hear this on July 8. All right, ordinances.
Balance of the consent agenda, please.
That's right, we have one more item. Well, we actually got two. Is there, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda? Have a motion of second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda has been approved. All right, ordinances.
Under ordinances, item 9A1 is a petition to rezone approximately 15.5 acres from rural to industrial zoning district on property located at the southeast corner of Beehive Road and Billmore Lane. The parcel has been purchased by the Industrial Development Board for a future industrial use. The planning commission recommended approval of this item by vote of 7-0. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
Let me just organize and ask unanimous consent.
Second.
Of motion seconds, anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with the vote on this this evening? Seeing a hearing now, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the City Council regarding this topic, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak to the council. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? Yes, Mr. Griswold.
Thank you again. Yeah, I'd like to know from the planning perspective, were, were there any comments from the folks that live on Cannon Lane? Anybody show up for that or correspond with the city?
They did not.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, Lindsey with the roll call.
O'Blin.
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Foreman. Yes, ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes. Yes.
Item 9A2 is a petition to rezone approximately 10.1 acres from rural to Development District Housing, that's DDH zoning district, for property located on the west side of Wrights Mill Road just south of I-85. The planning commission recommended approval by a vote of 7-0 with a condition that the development agreement accompany the rezoning that commit, commits the developer to install Santerre sewer to the site. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'd like to deny unanimous consent.
So we'll deny unanimous consent, and this will automatically move to the July 8 meeting?
That is correct.
And the public hearing will move with that?
Correct. That is correct.
Okay, all right. Is everybody comfortable with that on the council note we just did? Okay, all right.
Okay.
Resolutions.
Under resolutions, item 10A1 is a petition for conditional use approval for a performance residential development, a multi-unit development on property located at 1908 Opelika Road, also known as Duke Circle. The planning commission recommended approval of this application by a vote of 7-0. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second. Of motion second, this time we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the City Council regarding this item, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you will have five minutes to speak. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
I do, I have one, thank you. If you've ever driven over there, this is the roughest road that you'll ever drive on. It is rougher than anything you can imagine, so it's going to be great to have this thing, this thing, this project go forward, and I look forward to seeing how it's going to work. Now, I'm not sure if it's going to be an Opelika Road address, or if it's Duke Circle, or all the above. Exactly what's going to be developed there, I'm not clear on that, but do we have any information on entryways and, and what's going to be developed?
So there's information in the packet, and there'll be a lot to be discussed concerning access management, and, you know, I do want to stress that Duke Circle is a private street. We do not take ownership and responsibility for the maintenance of that street. However, you know, it could have an address off Opelika Road, but there's also, as currently, addresses off the private street of Duke Circle, so they could be addressed like, you know, either way.
For, for additional context, this is the street that is right next to Laredo's, so it'll definitely be a huge improvement to what's currently there.
And if you could add to, you know, discussion concerning access management, we will be looking at cross connections for future connections to adjacent developments as we look at that area.
All right, anyone else?
Will the city take over the maintenance of this road once?
It's not the intent, it would still be a private street.
All right, we have a motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10A2 is a petition for conditional use approval for, by KFT Alabama for an industrial use, a manufacturing facility on proper, property located at 272 Technology Parkway. The conditional use request is for an increase in the square footage for a planned 26,000-square-foot expansion of KFT Alabama. Planning commission recommended approval of this application by a vote of 7-0. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
Of motion second, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item ten A three is a petition for conditional use approval by Alabama Power Company for the Shug Jordan Parkway substation. This is a public service use, an electrical utility substation on property located at fifteen fifteen Shug Jordan Parkway. The planning commission recommended approval for this application by a vote of seven zero.
May for approval.
Second. Motion of second, I'll open the public hearing. Again, if you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes. We'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
Do we know what's going to be on the remainder of this parcel? I mean, they're only using about half of it or a third of it. Is there any plans on the remaining piece?
No, they intend to own and operate the entire thing, there won't be any other future development.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Yes, just briefly, there's quite a bit of staff comment on screening, parking, landscaping, and there will be a formal review process, developmental review process. So am I reading that right? Are all these restrictions or criteria going to be placed on this conditional use?
So when the staff comments are written, a lot of them are pointing out things that will have to be done as part of the design that's, that'll be addressed during the DRT process. These are not necessarily conditions that would relate to the approval of that, but it'd be items that we would work out during the DRT process when they submit their plans.
For instance, you can't park on the property, you can only park on an access road to the property. Will that be a requirement before they can use the property for this purpose?
That's just a comment acknowledging that, so, yes. I mean, this is not an area that's going to be high intensity for use, it's just addressing, you know, where the parking would occur as opposed to, you know, a lot of times, you know, most of everything requires a certain amount of parking. There's no required parking for this because of its particular use.
All right, thank you much.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item ten A four is a petition for conditional use approval by United Rentals for a road service use, equipment rental, and storage on property located at twenty-four ninety South College Street. The planning commission recommended approval with a condition for this application by a vote of seven zero. As a reminder, we have provided in your packet, the, an update to your packet with the planning commission resolution, that reflects the condition placed on that recommendation. I will read that for your benefit. It's, "Equipment and structures shall remain stored on the property in areas consistent with the locations outlined in the approved site plan." And there was a site plan provided in your, in the packet, in the staff report, that identified certain late areas where their new items would be stored. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second, this time we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak to the council.
Michael Rogers, I'm the applicant, if it's appropriate for me to speak at this time.
Sure, would you give us your name, your address, please?
Michael Rogers, owner of MR Designs in Eldorado, Arkansas, thirty-three eighty Southfield Road in Eldorado, Arkansas. Talked to, we presented Thursday night, and have been working with the city to provide this site plan. This is an existing United Rentals site. I'm an architect in South Arkansas, and we represent United Rentals nationally on various projects. This is one where there's no new project that we're representing, we're simply getting through a conditional use permit on behalf of our client. This, again, this is an existing location, and what we're looking to do is simply change branch types from a power generating company to a what we call reliable onsite service. For most layman's terms, those are porta potties, commercial porta potties, trailers, screening, things like that. We've looked at all of these sites, and we have multiple branches of these sites, anywhere from Montgomery, Alabama, Des Moines, Iowa, Tulsa, Chicago, that we're actually working with right now. And we understand that we want to be a good neighbor. So whenever we're going into these sites, the reason that we provided the layout for the planning department was so that we can be sure we were very strict on where we were putting things, what was going to be visible, what was not going to be visible. All of our sites are extremely organized, cleanly, and rest assured, they're going to carry the United Rentals blue. This is not a bright orange porta potty, this is a seven foot, six inch unit of what we call plastics. So when you're looking at the site plan, that plastics area is what you would think of there. There may be days to where there may be only a couple of units that are out there, there may be days where there are multiple units out there, depending on if they're at job sites or not, or there's an event going on in town or not. I hope everybody has, if you are concerned about screening and visibility, have had a chance to drive by. I took a few minutes even before coming here, as I come down the interstate, and recorded a couple of videos, whether the police officers want to need to see those or not. One is simply going down the on-off ramp and just simply looking straight ahead as far as a driver looking out the passenger front side. The area where we're showing the plastics is not even visible at that point. Once you get past the mature tree line, you immediately get to a building that is shielding that area. So whenever you're just looking from a driver's side out to the right, that area of plastics is not visible. It is only whenever you turn directly ninety degrees to your right, and we took a video just out the passenger side window. That area is visible for two seconds whenever we're driving across there. So whenever we're getting off of the interstate, for two seconds, you're able to catch a glimpse of where the plastics area is for that. From the hotel side, it's a much higher elevation, and they have a six-foot fence, so it's not visible at all from the hotel. And any screening that we would be doing from the interstate side, a six-foot, eight-foot fence even is not going to help any at all, unfortunately. We can provide some additional screening, we do temporary fencing, so we can provide additional screening if needed. We could even move those plastics units more toward the interstate, and as much as on a site plan, it doesn't look good to make that more up front, that actually would bring it to the fence to where it would be at such lower elevation, you would only be looking over the tops of these units. So we provided the site plan, we're willing to continue to work with the city on a agreeable measure to utilize this site, to provide the screening that's needed. But I would encourage everybody before considering a no vote, to think of that two seconds staring out the right side of your vehicle as you're going sixty miles an hour forward, that is appropriate for becoming what we would probably think of as a highly visible area for visitors like myself to your city. And quite frankly, it is, is an unnoticed part as we go past there. The power generating equipment would have been the same thing, not really noticing it as you come onto town. So I'm here to answer any questions if you have them, but I appreciate the time.
Thank you, I feel like you'll have some questions. We'll let some other folks speak if they'd like to, and then we'll ask those questions. All right. Thank you, anyone else would like to speak? Public hearing. Anyone? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Anybody from the council have a comment or question, would like to ask the applicant to come forward and answer a question?
I would, mayor.
Please, okay. Please.
Good evening, sir.
Yes, sir.
Where, whatever you'd be servicing with these, we're talking about the regular porta potties like you see?
Sure, so there are actually three different things that we'll be utilizing at this site. United Rentals, from Eldorado, Arkansas, we have one United Rentals, and it keeps a little bit of everything on site, from equipment to power generating equipment, to porta potties, all of that. There are multiple United Rental sites that we are now moving to, multiple branches. So this is a regional site. So this is to where throughout the Auburn and greater Auburn region, we will be providing those mainly to commercial-type businesses, construction sites, any events that are needing to take place. But what we also do is commercial trailers, so whenever we are having events downtown, to where we can provide ADA accessible units, and something probably more capacity instead of having individual units. But the idea is, the model that we've seen in being able to provide to the service area, is mainly construction sites. There's not any customer traffic that comes in, it is mainly people who are just calling and placing an order, and we're delivering. It's also key to know that there's not any cleaning that is being done on site. Any of the containers are pretty much dumped off-site, cleaned out off-site. There are units that simply trucks that just go out every day and come back every evening. The only thing that happens on site is what we call a dusting, just like in South Arkansas, they might get a little yellow every once in a while. And before they go out on site, the pollen or dust is just cleaned off of them before they go onto a job site.
There's no cleanup going on on this?
No, there's no cleanup going on, and the only, there will be some storage containers that are simply filled with water, so that there's water put in these units whenever they leave the site, and they show up onto a job site.
Do you have any idea how many units we're talking about at one given, at a given time?
I do not, that's the, depending, I asked that question today, and it was, we could have two, and we could have a hundred. It just depends on where we are in the volume, as far as if they're all out somewhere, or if they're all in. But as far as just what we consider the porta potties, I believe that's probably the concern. But it is to where the porta potties could be two, it could be a hundred, that are stacked neatly in that one area that's shown that is mainly shielded by the building that is there. There may be a dozen trailer units at any given time that are stacked against the fence, there may be only two trailer units stacked against there. There, again, it depends on the demand of the area at that time.
And these are, the trailers you're speaking of are like we see over here for football games? They're nice?
Oh, yes. Most definitely, it's going to be something to where is a nice, what we consider like a cargo trailer, like a tool trailer that you would normally see, to where it's a white trailer that just has doors, steps, or a ramp up to it if it's an ADA unit.
Suppose those would be cleaned before being brought back over?
Yes, they are.
So there's no odor or nothing?
There's no odor or anything that is, that is brought to the site, there's no dumping that happens on site, all of that happens off-site. This is simply a distribution yard for this product.
Thank you. Mayor?
The, the maximum number of units you're saying would be one hundred?
Yes.
That would be on site?
They're saying that there could be up to a hundred.
Up to a hundred.
Up to a hundred at that point. We don't, I don't have a firm number on, on what that is, a lot of that is depending on what the, really what the region brings us as far as a load. If we're able to do more business in the region, and being able to have more units, so that there's more units out in the area, and then there is a time of a few weeks, maybe a week or two, where most of them are back before they go out again. It's really, it's just like any other distribution area, to where you're, you're, you have a product that is going in and out, like a rental center. It might be a day to where you walk in and all of those products are gone. Well, some days you walk in, and we have plenty of those products to come out. We would love for them to be gone all the time, but we want to be sure that we're aware that there are times to where there's not a lot of festivals, there's not a lot of events, there may not be a whole lot of, during the season where there's not a lot of construction that's going on, where those products would be back. If that's the case, those products, they won't sit for long, they're going to go to a different site, somewhere else where they're going to be utilized. But it's just like any other buying and selling model, we want those products out in the field as much as possible and not sitting on site.
What's the size vehicle that's moving these trailers?
So the, the size vehicle, I mean, most of these, you have multiple different units. You have, like a pump truck is going to be the truck that goes in and out. That's going to be the majority of what your commercial vehicle is that is there, that is simply just parked there overnight and goes out in the morning. Now, if we are looking at the, the trailer aspects, those can be used with my Chevy Silverado that's out, out front. I mean, it can be, there's not a large truck that has to use these, it is really just a bumper hitch at that point. It does not require like a large-scale semi or anything like that to move these units.
What about your plastics?
The plastics are moved with the dump truck, or with the, the pump truck.
Okay.
It is to where those are, are there with them, to where there's not some large piece of equipment or anything. This is not like an eighteen-wheeler in and out or anything like that at this site.
Just for, for my own edification here, the, the pump truck that pumps water or stuff into the, into the portlet and then out?
So that is one to where it is coming in, either it's filling with water, so a lot of times we're, here I am an architect talking about this, my understanding is, is where we're going to trade out a unit, so if it is a unit that needs to come back and be cleaned, a unit is, is there, it is filled with water, they're on site, the other unit is taken, it is dumped, it is brought back to site for pretty much just to trade out, so that we always have one there on site. But it is, it's like a water truck, is what it is.
That's water.
Yeah.
Where are these dumped?
There'll be, I believe there's a local area now to where, I don't know where they're dumped, to be honest with you, right now. Usually there's a dumping station with a sanitary department.
They should be dumping at the H C Morgan plant, we have a receiving station there, so.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Will it be washed there as well?
Usually they are cleaned out there as well, yes. When they come back to the site, they are clean.
They can rinse out there if they need to, they'll pay for it.
It's the same as if they go, like, like these are maintenance at the site where, you know, we have people who show up to the site, and they're giving it a rinse down, and it has, has to be done, it has to be dumped. I mean, there's, there's several processes we do just to make sure that they are cleanly, even whenever they're on somebody else's site.
I drove by this site too, a couple times to look at it, I'm not sure that you'd be the right person to answer this question. So whoever, whether it be on this dais or out there chime in, the, the trees here that block this, are those, we're in the middle of summer, so those are fully, vegetation is, is strong almost. In the wintertime, do those trees, do they lose their leaves, these, is it less green? Is there less cover at a certain time of year? Does anyone know?
I did not pay that close attention to the types of trees they are, my assumption is that those would lose their leaves during the fall, but we'd have to double check to see who.
It's not, it's not, it's not.
They're not evergreen.
They're not evergreen.
And you can see there more.
So during the fall, you would be able to, or in the winter?
I used to watch it from the other side of the road when I was deer hunting, a few years ago. But it's gone now.
Can you describe what's going to happen in this fencing panel storage area? What, what type of fencing are we talking about, these chain link fences?
Yeah, so it would be something similar to like a twelve, a ten-foot by six-foot panel. They're simply just laid down on a pallet, that you would see like construction fencing, whenever there's a commercial construction project that is going on, if there's temporary fencing that needs to go on those, those are brought to the job site. A lot of times, when you see them on site, they're the panels that have the legs on the bottom. Most of the time, the way those are stored are they are laid down, and the legs are just simply detached from the bottom. So that's just an area to where those panels would be stored.
And again, you may not be the right person to answer this, so leave it open to whoever can. But the sightline from our Parks and Recreation Facilities, you know, we're going to have hundreds and hundreds of people visiting the city, and they're going to be parking, I suppose, up, all up and down that road, and up in that elevated portion. Are they going to be seen, the, all these plastics and whatnot from the softball fields?
Yes.
And that's an area of ornamental fencing that is there, that if we need to provide some screening there on that fencing, on the backside of it, we could, if that was a concern. And it is at a lower elevation there, so like I've got, I went by and took several videos just, you know, to submit if we needed to.
Yeah.
But where that road is, you're looking down at the site as well. So it is to where from the fields, there is a little bit of a rise of the road before you go back down to the. you go back down to the site. So from the field side, there's a lot of natural barrier that is there, but I wouldn't stand here and say that it's fully, it's certainly not fully screened naturally, but it can be where we provide screening on the backside of that ornamental fencing if it was desired. Again, our goal is to be a good neighbor in this. We understand what we're, we understand what business this is.
My concern is we're gonna have hundreds, perhaps thousands of visitors to that very nice softball complex, either participating or parking or, or whatever. And they're gonna look up and see Auburn's, their perspective of Auburn is a bunch of porta potties. You know, that's a, not a desirable feeling view, I don't think. I don't know. Perhaps some of y'all that have been down there looking at it closer than I have or even Parks and Recreation may wanna weigh in and.
I think you're, I drove around that area. I think you're right, but it's, it's, you would be able to, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure what effect fencing would have. It might, it might help it there, but, but you'd definitely be able to see them. Anyone else?
How many employees we have on site?
So usually we keep about 12 employees for that type of site, most of them leaving throughout the day. About half of them would be on site just for kind of running operations, what we call them.
How do you unload them?
Sir?
How are they unloaded? Have a tow motor or?
So a lot of times it's just a forklift type unit that is loading and unloading. Some, some of the units, they'll have the same way you would have a dumpster on the back of a truck. You'll have a couple of porta potties on the back of a truck that are, they're sitting them down. There's various types of truck units.
The condition that the planning commission added, "Equipment and structures shall remain stored on the property in the areas consistent with the locations outlined in the approved site plan."
Yes.
You were all amenable to that when they, when they brought it up?
We developed the site plan, yes.
And the condition that it would stay that way?
Yes. That, that was the purpose of why we developed it. Yes, sir.
Great.
Now, we're, we're completely, you know, we developed that site plan thinking about the size of the area, developing the site plan as far as visibility, and we felt like that was the best function, but also, you know, being, being the good neighbor, you know, at the same time.
Thank you.
If I may, to piggyback on that, I believe it says that the area has to be paved, implied pavement, asphalt or concrete. Is that correct? And did you, you were aware of that, I guess, were you not? You've taken that into consideration?
That has not been brought up to our attention during the discussions.
I guess we ought to talk about it then.
That's a special development standard.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so that was, yeah, so that was a special development standard. And I guess that's, this is one of the reasons for the comments in the staff report of something to just, to kind of reference, just kind of when we get down the road, like once things are approved and go through the development, go through the DRT process. So that, that's something that we point to just kind of like before things actually are occupied and uses commence.
So that is not a requirement?
No, no, no. It is, it's something that's pointed to. And so oftentimes, like what we'll have, like when we have the manuals, the standard, manuals, development standards and all of these things, they may be buried in these different ordinances or these other places, but to draw attention to them, we put them in the staff reports and point to them that way. Like when we come back to it, it's actually being developed, hey, this is in there, don't forget about this. This is something that must be done. So it is something that does need to be done.
But if, if the area that the pla, and I, I don't know that it is, but if the area that the plastics are supposed to go is not paved and we were to approve this and we approve it subject to the condition that everything is placed where it's supposed to go, when you, you get to your DRT review, are you saying that, that, that?
No, so, so, so the condition really just kind of references like the shaded area and the hatched areas that are just referencing the spatial locations of what they're talking about. And it's the conditions of the site and I guess the special development standards, those are separate. So that's just kind of in addition to not really bound by what's on the site plan. It's, it already exists. So that, that's also kind of our reason for pointing it out in the site plan.
So they won't, they won't get a, they won't get a zoning certificate if they do not comply with those requirements?
I, I'm just curious, as you're the applicant, are you aware?
No, I, Thomas.
Says that outside display of vehicles, equipment or other merchandise for sale, lease or storage shall be on a paved surface. I don't know if you were.
So that, that has not been brought up as far as in, like in our discussions or even in the planning, you know, meeting. So we want to be sure that we're clear, like, since we are the business owner now, we are not changing the business and we have specifically said that we were not intending to do any improvements across buildings or site other than changing out these units. I want to be sure that, that I'm, that I'm clear that on my understanding of this. So it would be to where if we change business models, not business, but it's same tenant and just change the type of business there, I'd be required to pave the entire site. But if I continue as the business that I am right now, providing power generating equipment, I'm not required to pave the entire site.
Excuse me, and I'm not saying you have to pave the whole site. Don't, don't read and wrong.
No, that's why I asked the question.
It's just where you have the equipment actually, where the equipment actually sits and resides has to be paved. I don't know, is the entire lot, is it paved? I don't know, haven't been.
Yeah, 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 I guess like looking, looking on the aerials, I mean, that'd be a question for them. So, so for us, this would, like, it would have to be done, like, they, they would have to meet it to get the zoning, zoning certificate. And I guess the reason that it's being triggered is the conditional use permit. So if they were to continue operating as they were today, they wouldn't have to make these improvements. But when you do another conditional use permit, everything must comply under the new conditional use permit to get the zoning, to get the zoning certificate.
I'm pretty sure that back area is not, and I, and it's just from driving by.
Judging from the aerial that I have in front of me, none of it's paved. Other than the front drop.
And I'm pretty sure that back area is not paved. So for, for, for you to put the portlets there.
Is that considered?
In, in that spot, it would have to be paved.
Yeah, so, so pretty much, I mean, a pad would be compliant with that, so.
You said a pad?
Yeah.
A port pad?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So pretty much it's kind of everything matching, like where they're saying that they would store these items, like if they were to pour a pad, like then that, that would be fine. But I guess that, that'd be something that we'd talk about, I guess, eventually.
And any product would be considered equipment?
I guess so. I mean, probably, probably.
Or other merchandise for sale or lease. So that, that covers what you're leasing, I suppose.
Yeah, and I'd like to clarify, you know, Councilperson Griswold is reading from the staff report, so that was in the staff comments concerning this application.
That's why I didn't realize if you had.
No, we specifically stated that, that no site improvements had been planned or building improvements had been planned. And the only thing requested of us was pretty much the layout.
Would that be in the case, does that change your thoughts about moving forward with this conditional use and this change of purpose of this particular facility?
We would have to, as, as I'm representing a client.
I understand that.
That would not be my decision.
I understand that.
We would have to unders, fully understand whether we are talking about compacted millings, are we talking asphalt, are we talking concrete? Then we are talking about, are we talking drive lanes, accessing all areas of the site, drive paths? When we talk about equipment, does that mean fencing panels? Is that equipment? There are many questions that I would have to know exactly where we would have to have this done.
Sure. You know, this, this area that we're talking about, when the softball complex was developed, there were batting cages down there, there was a go-kart track, there was indoor arcades. The owner probably struck a little early and it wasn't able to sustain itself and, and then United Rentals been there for a while. There's a gentleman that's just opened a new restaurant up, up the hill. As Mr. Griswold said, there's thousands of people that go through that complex every year. And this is exit 51, which is South College Street, which is right, goes right through the heart of our city. I am personally uncomfortable putting a distribution center for porta potties in such a key strategic place. That's just my personal feeling. I am thankful for porta potties and the purpose that they serve. And I'm thankful for the purpose that they serve in our community and every football Saturday in Auburn, I generally find one. But to have one in that sensitive strategic location personally makes me unsettled to say to our community that this is a distribution center for porta potties, welcome to Auburn. So, but you've done a great job and I appreciate you driving over here from Arkansas and you've answered all the questions that have been asked of you in a professional manner and you've been throwing some things at you that you didn't realize tonight and you've done well. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I, I still just, if you don't mind.
Yeah, please.
I've got it.
Sure, not a problem. I need to be worth an eight-hour drive over.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that you are clear of the terms as, as I'm reading them, as we are reading them here, that it would mean that there would be multiple areas on site that would need to be poured or would need to be paved, whatever that definition is, to include the plastic storage area, the fencing panel storage area, the trailer storage area. And I don't know whether that extends to parking of employee parking or not. But, so that, that is, those terms are a surprise to you, correct?
For the discussion that we have had at this site, yes. And they have not been brought up. And then we, the planning department, I'm, this is not, this really, don't shake anything, I'm sorry. This is, these are, these are not, these are just not discussions that we have had. Like I said, we, we have multiple of these sites and I understand the request. Last night I was in Temple, Texas, and it's a request that is there, that it was, the entire site has to be paved. It's where, and then we just put evaluation to what the conditions are and then we decide whether we're going to develop that or not. We will leave here tonight, it, it sounds as if, not, not reading into this, but, but if the vote is that we're, that this type of development is, is not prohibited and not moving forward, then really, the, at the end of the day, not parsing words or anything, but that really doesn't matter because then we can continue the business model and, and we can keep it a gravel yard. I don't, I don't know that that's what we want to do. I, I want to actually improve the site, continue on with the branch, put a unit there that, that we feel like is going to serve, you know, the, the area. We keep our units tidy, we keep them clean, there's a reason why we do operations the way we are. And then really, it's really a question of, I asked, I, I asked the council, council member this morning, I said, you know, where, where would you like them? Because it is to where wherever it is, there's going to be some reason why we don't want to look at a porta potty. We love them, looking at them at games, but are we?
It's 'cause we need them.
'Cause we need them. We also need someplace for them and we need a business to operate them. So there, there are two sides of that. So that, that is why, you know, that's why you have an architect in front of you that's representing that because we take that seriously as well. We don't think of it as a joke or anything and, you know, that it is what it is. We want to be sure that the business model that we're putting in place is being that good neighbor, that we do go through the processes, that we work with the local planning departments and we try to make sure all of that happens. That's why we came over Thursday night to be sure we spoke on the matter and answered any questions. That's why I'm here tonight, to be sure we're able to speak on the matter and answer any questions so that it's not just left up to the imagination of what this is going to be. It is to where we're, we're saying this is what it is.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir. For the last 25, 30 years, this site has not looked the same as it does now. The trees have matured significantly and provided a lot of screening. We're taking that for granted, but I would like to institutionalize and formalize that screening because it is to everybody's advantage that the trees stay there and it had become part of the agreement. So if, if we do extend an agreement, then those trees have to, have to be part of the language, I guess. I can't think of anything better. I can't think of a better screening device, but we are blessed with those trees. By, by God has provided us that screening ability.
Are those trees on our right-of-way? Do we control those trees? Do you know? Are they on al-dots?
That would be al-dots right-of-way, but it's, 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 the trees are not on the right-of-way from what I can tell. They look like they're on the private property. You can put a condition to maintain the, you know, existing vegetation that is a condition, condition that is applied to request at times. So that is something to consider.
And I will say the trees that are actually screening the property are not between the property that, that United Rentals is on and the interstate. The, the trees that are there that are screening are actually to the property that is to the west. They are the ones that are screening the property. The fence line there on the property we're talking about has some vegetation that is there, but no mature trees. It's the property that is to the west that has those trees that's providing the screening.
Anyone else?
I have some questions for staff, but.
Yeah, sir.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Please. Hold on just one second, Kelly. Need to make sure I know where I am. Have we closed the public hearing? We've closed the public hearing.
All right, so we're good.
Go ahead, Sam. Sorry. Thank y'all for your patience.
Okay. For staff, the Future Land Use Plan designates this as interstate commercial and it specifies that it serves the traveling public such as hospitality, restaurants and gas stations. So the Future Land Use, did y'all take this into account before they take it into the planning commission?
No, so, so the Future Land Use Plan, I, I guess we provide it as informational to the planning commission and to your body as well. And I guess since we don't make recommendations anymore, it's just information that is provided. But I, I guess I will state that the proposed conditional use would not comply with the Future Land Use Plan, but it's still a conditional use under the existing zoning district.
Okay, and the other question is, since the staff comments don't include Parks and Recreation, I'd be, I'd like to hear what you have to say. Since this is directly adjacent as one of the listed property owners or so, so to speak of adjacent properties. Put you on the spot.
Yeah, this is the first chance that I am seeing the site layout. So I am learning this this evening. It would be viewable from the softball complex. We obviously are currently making improvements to the softball complex with the turf renovation project, so we do plan to continue to use this site for many years to come for not only local play, but as well as tournaments that we bring into the community. So of course we wanted to have, to put our best foot forward.
I have to say, it is disappointing that the staff hasn't coordinated this upon, or over various departments since they are listed as the adjacent property on both the south and the west. You would think that, just like any citizen, the department would have had an opportunity to provide input.
Well, the, the staff did look at this. This is the city of Auburn property, so staff did take that under consideration and, you know, would add that there were no other regulations that we could apply beyond what comments were provided in here and then related to specifically to the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, so, I mean, we could, we could certainly vote, we can, if there's, if there's some conditions that the council is interested in, in applying, that can be discussed, we can postpone. I'm just, I'm looking for direction from the council. Yes, sir, go ahead, chief.
When I first got, came here, not, I was planning on voting no for this, but hearing they, they gonna clean them up and it's gonna be, it's gonna be clean and neat and orderly and I take the man at his word, he seems like a pretty good fellow. I, I think I can vote for it now, for approving it. I think Mr. Sonny brought up a good point, it's basically surrounded by trees and it hadn't been that way all, the whole time. And I, I just think it's something that I could support, but if someone, the rest of the council doesn't feel that way, I can certainly understand, I understand both sides. But I just, I feel like they, they're gonna have to keep it clean, not gonna be cleaning them up there, it's gonna be loading and unloading, sounds like. And the trucks don't sound like they're gonna be too big to come in and out of there. So I don't think I have any odors or anything like that with it, so I, I could support it, but I certainly understand if not everyone feels that way.
Yeah, so you'd be good moving forward with the vote tonight, chief?
Yeah, I would.
Okay, sure. Anyone else? Quick question. If, if we move forward with the vote tonight and then the applicant determines that it's not feasible to proceed with these various requirements, then just withdraw? If it's a, so I would presume you're talking, if it was voted in affirmative and then the count, and then the applicant decided that they did not want to pursue the paving, what would happen at that point in time, Mr. Cummins?
If they did not, you know, proceed with the, what was approved by conditional use, that conditional use would eventually expire at 18 months. So, you know, that's one thing. And if they just don't do the project, then that does happen from time to time.
Okay.
If we vote in affirmative for it, they, they got to match, they got to pay the parking lot and all that kind of stuff.
They would have to comply with that zoning requirement for paving those, those specific areas.
And the conditional use would run with the land, right?
Yes, it does.
If this, if this United Rentals is ever sold, new tenant comes in, I mean, obviously they got to comply with the same rules that we have here, but we may not know what kind of condition they want to keep these kind of, these, these units or they, they may not have the same approach to what United Rentals has got, you know, at this particular point.
Yes.
Just, it concerns me from a long-term perspective as well with this running with the land. It just, so, it's like, as you mentioned, mayor, it's a, it's a very focal, a very, you know, focal point when you're arriving in our town. And so, not that I don't, I certainly appreciate United Rentals and their, their commitment to the, the, being in Auburn, but I just don't know if I feel this is the right place for, for this type of distribution center.
Aye.
I certainly hope there's some other sites that, that could be, you know, accommodating for, for what they need to do.
I share those, I share those concerns. Just, I'm uncomfortable with placing a, a facility like this, a sword facility of porta-potties at, at this site. And I'm, I'm uncomfortable moving forward to that, especially from a long-term standpoint. I do want to say, Mr. Roberts, that thank you very much for, for coming up here and speaking to us. You did a admirable job.
All right. Anyone else that'd like to say anything?
I've just got one more concern about, I know you briefly mentioned in passing that, that you would be suggestible to additional screening on some of the more vulnerable perimeters, which I want, I assume is from the parking lot of the, the, the sports facility there. Is, is, is that an effective solution to the sight lines from that elevation there?
So.
Some type of screening or fencing?
So, I'll speak on this as far as just visiting that drive one time. I will not, I was there 30 minutes ago. So, it, I believe that providing a six-foot-high screening at the ornamental fencing would appropriately screen from the facility, the complex that you have there. And we would be willing to do that. I, I want to be sure that I, I'm clear on this. For me, this is not a, this is the way it is, so, and this is the only vote that, you know, matters type thing. If, if it is to where, you know, the paving is a requirement, then the paving is a requirement. If it is where screening is a requirement there against college, then that is, that is a requirement and, and we are willing to meet that requirement so that we can have that screening. Even the question that I asked justice is, you know, I understand that I'm a representative tonight of a client. We will take any conditions, you know, and I think that's usually the discussion that we have with city councils. It is to where, what are the conditions that would be placed on this for it to be acceptable? And then we take those back to our client. And if we're not willing to, through this process, through the design team, through the review, if for some reason that, that we decide not to meet those, then it simply just falls back to the conditional use that we have currently. And then we have a decision to make as a company, whether we can continue that bu- business model that we have now, or if there's another branch that meets those same needs. So, you know, part of this is the discussion of what would it take to be able to put this at that location? If it is screening, then it is screening. It sounds like, you know, the paving is needed no matter what if we change models, and that's a requirement. And, you know, and it's simple enough for me, as soon as I leave here, I make the phone call and I say, here's the requirements that we have if we're going to do business there with this branch. And that's, that's an easy, easy thing for me. And then there's a, there's a decision that's made then. But for us, it's a discussion of what would it take, you know, what are the requirements to be able to do this? And I appreciate the discussion, I do. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry.
Yes, sir.
Just have one more question.
Okay.
Mr. Cummings.
Yes, sir.
We haven't seen anything brought before us about buffering and screening. We, we don't know what to tell him. And I guess, has the staff got those requirements determined?
For this, I mean, I think it's been brought to everybody's attention that, I mean, this is a unique site, the, the site where everything can be stored is much lower than, than, than the roadway. The point was made and is, is very understandable that, that the only way to really screen this through vegetation would be through the mature trees. Any other screening would have to be done probably on-site to keep things out of sight. And, you know, that would be something that would have to be evaluated embedded during, you know, during their design. Or if you so choose to postpone this and allow them to come back with some other options, they could consider that and staff would be happy to work with them.
I just feel like there are a lot of unknowns that I, I hate, and I don't think he has answers, and I don't think we have, I don't have the answers. So, when do you see those answers being available to us or those recommendations?
It, it would be up to the applicant and the timing for them. We would be willing to work with them as, as needed if, if that so be the.
The council would have to provide that direction to the staff, correct?
We would ask if the council were to take any action to postpone this item, what would be your expectations of what you would want the applicant to do and, and staff to review before it comes back?
Are the requirements we spoke of already required by planning?
The requirements for the paved surface, yes.
Right.
Additional screening would have to be something that would be a potential condition that you're going to consider.
Yeah, that, that would be above and beyond.
Yes, that would be. That would be a special condition which you can apply.
Yeah.
And we would be willing to accept, let me be clear on that.
I, I certainly would like to do an amendment to it then if we're going to vote on it, to where we require the fencing screening.
Chief Dawson is, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in there.
Counsel's opinion, uh, do we want to just postpone the thing altogether? Give everybody time to look at it again and take it up again, or?
I feel comfortable voting on it tonight.
I'm ready to vote on it tonight.
I have another question for staff.
Please.
In December of '07, conditional use was approved for equipment sales and rental on this same property.
Yes, sir.
What is it that has brought this to the attention of, or to the level of a conditional use at this point? Is it simply because it's sanitary equipment? Is it?
It's a change of use.
What's different?
It's a change of use to storage. Justice, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, yeah. So, that, that was, when they reached out several months ago, that was a discussion internally. And so, when we looked at it, the approved conditional use does not cover their described use that they put forward. And so, there was repairs, I stopped having it in front of me in the email. But they, they mentioned repairs and like upkeep. It was a lot more mechanical based and a lot more focused on storage than just like the rental side and the sale side of it. So, it was a, it was a, it was a tweak that wasn't covered under their initial conditional use.
Tried. Okay. Thanks.
All right. Still looking for some direction. I, I know how few people are ready to approach this up here. Are you ready to vote? Or is there, Chief Dawson mentioned potentially postponing and asking for some, excuse me?
Didn't he move? Did you move?
I think he said, that wasn't an official motion.
No.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure. Thank you for catching me. You just said that you could.
Right.
You could do that. I got you. How would the council like to move forward?
I'd like to vote on it.
Okay. Anyone else? I know Mr. Cobb wants to be ready to vote on it. Is the council ready to vote on this?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Do we have a motion? We got a motion, right? We got a motion in a second, so. I'm thinking you want to, you want to do this with hands, Lindsay? Is that probably, I'm thinking it's probably going to be a split vote maybe, so, all right. So, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. Everyone not in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay.
It fails.
All right. Final item.
And I would hope that, that we have some specific recommendations that the gentleman can take back to his client as to what's required. Do you, I want to make sure he fully understands what, what our expectations are. Is, is that something that, that you can work out with, with justice? Can y'all sort that out?
I'm not sure where you, I'm not following you there. Because he doesn't have any because it failed.
Continuing business as I am now.
Yeah. But if he, if he's continuing to do business as he does now, he's not going to have to change anything about his yard, correct?
Yeah, it's correct.
Okay. All right.
He can't reapproach us for, is it a year?
Yep.
For this particular condition?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Cummings?
Okay. There's actually two more items. Item 10B is resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Train U.S. Incorporated in the amount of $314,427 to manufacture and supply the Lake Wilmore Park Pool Pack Dehumidification Unit. A separate contract will be bid for the installation of the dehumidification unit, doors, and duck work at a later date for the pool. The long lead time for this equipment makes it necessary to enter into this agreement at this time.
If they approve them.
Second. You have a motion in a second? Any comments or questions?
I have one question. Is this a budgeted item?
Yes, it is.
Anyone else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
So, the next item is, is item 11A, and it's the acknowledgment of receipt of a grievance appeal concerning a CDVG housing rehabilitation loan. I'll turn it over to Mayor Andrews.
Sure. I have a statement here that I'd like to read. The purpose of this additional item is to acknowledge that Ms. Bridget Gibson has filed a grievance with the city regarding a community development block grant loan that was made to her mother, Ella Reese, in 2007. Ms. Gibson has filed a grievance on her mother's behalf, asking that the loan be forgiven instead of being repaid. Ms. Gibson's appeal has worked its way through the city's grievance process, and the last step in that process is an appeal to the city council. I request the council to, to agree to set a specifically called meeting for the hearing on Ms. Gibson's appeal, so that this matter can be given the proper time and consideration it needs. If the council agrees, we will provide dates and times to the city manager at which they would be available for such a meeting between the, the week of July 14th through 18th. I will ask that the council meeting members provide this information to the city manager's office by the end of this work week, June 20th. The meeting can be set for any time of day or evening at which at least a quorum of the council can be present. During the hearing, the council will hear from Ms. Gibson regarding her grievance. The city attorney's office will coordinate the city's response. Following the conclusion of the hearing, the council can take up to 15 days to decide the appeal and provide Ms. Gibson with its decision. Please remember that any deliberation and vote on this issue will need to take place at a public meeting subject to the Open Meetings Act. Okay? So, if y'all would all let me know, let the city manager know by the end of this week if you're available the week of July 14th through 18th. And we'll set a time for a hearing.
Yes. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. All right.
I have no other items for the agenda tonight.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the citizens' open forum. It's your opportunity to speak to the council about anything that might be on your mind. We'd ask that you come forward and share your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes and that you address your comments to the city council. Who would be first?
Elizabeth White, 6374, still drive. As someone who participated on Saturday, I first want to thank the Auburn Police Department for their very positive presence at the No Kings protest. All through our lives, we warn and try to protect those we love from foreseeable harm. From the toddler for whom we put on cabinet safety locks, to the young children we keep out of the street, to the teenager we teach to drive with her phone in the backseat, to the older parent we remind to take his medicine or persuade that climbing ladders is no longer a good idea. We stay vigilant to save those we love unnecessary pain, injury, or heartache. At your last meeting, I requested that those of you leading our community stay informed and vigilant in protecting our fellow citizens from impending harm that would befall them should the proposed budget bill pass. I know you are not the ones deliberating on the bill before you for a vote. But I also know Auburn does not exist in a bubble. And all of you know as sure as I do that decisions made in Washington will impact our citizenry. If you see a train barreling down the track leading to your people, it seems you have a few choices. One, jump off the track and think, well, at least I'm safe. Two, shout to those around you to jump and grab a small child or a person in a wheelchair as you go to try to save as many as you can. Or three, pull the switch on the track to send the train off into the side yard averting disaster and saving lives. When I came before you at the last meeting, I was urging you to do the latter. Help those of us who see impending harm pull the switch. Study what's at stake. Look at how the proposed cuts would leave many citizens in our local nursing homes without care. Consider how snap cuts would place hungry children in our classrooms. Whereas a retired teacher of 32 years, I can tell you hungry students tend to be listless or disruptive, not primed for learning. Those same teachers will be working with fewer resources as the bill amps up the federal commitment to push states to promote private school vouchers, meaning Auburn City schools will take a direct hit. Our schools, our children, our elderly, our veterans, our moderate to low-income folks are all on the train track, along with countless others. I appreciate that you work tirelessly for our city to attract new business investments here to improve the quality of life for your people. I hope you will be equally vigilant and protective of money that currently comes in in the way of assistance or benefits to the most vulnerable among us. Please consider calling senators and help those of us trying to pull that switch. Better to divert the train than to begin triage on a community drained of resources and trying to piece back together lives shattered, shattered in the name of fiscal responsibility by a bill that simultaneously further enriches the wealthiest among us. Thank you.